All right, I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees meeting to order on Monday, December 20th. It is 6:30 PM. We are holding this as a Zoom meeting. The Zoom link is at the top of the agenda, or if one chooses an audio call and number and associated meeting ID is also listed at the top of the agenda for those to participate. With that, we'll confirm that we have a quorum. So Lisa, please.
All right, Callan.
Roger.
Murphy.
Present.
Peterson.
Here.
Radcliffe.
Here.
Valencia.
Present.
Vanderwoldy.
Present.
And William.
Present. All right, we have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So find a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And choose for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Start item four then, public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. If you are from the public, we do have at least one individual who signed up a form, so we'll get to him first. But if you are from the public and would like to speak after Brian is done, please hold your comments to no more than three minutes. Share your name, your address, and we'll take it from there. So we'll start with Brian at 1004 Damascus Trail. And this in regards to the traffic on Damascus Trail.
Hello, thank you for having me. I really appreciate it. Just wanted to give the board some background on what the neighbors here are dealing with. When my wife and I were looking at this lot and talking to Andrew about it, I expressed concern that I didn't want to live on like the main drag. And he's like, you don't have to worry about that. He brought out another plan of the next 40 acres, which is where they ended up building the new elementary school. So at that time, he's like showing me all the roads coming up from BB. And all the places for the people living at the ends of like Red Hawk, Morning Dove, Pheasant Run. They could easily get to BB, you know, easy from Bus Road or driving south to BB. But as you all know, that land ended up getting sold to the school. So all that traffic now can only act, get out of here by coming onto Damascus Trail. And to make matters a lot worse, there's a huge new development getting built to the north of us. And all that traffic is also coming down Damascus Trail. We did have a signed petition from the whole neighborhood, including many people not living on Damascus Trail, to ask Andrew to build a construction road, which he agreed to do and did build. There's like many issues with the current situation, but the one I wanted to like focus on right now is all of the construction traffic that we still have on Damascus Trail. It is a huge amount of traffic, very large vehicles sometimes. And you know, sometimes it's just contractors just buzzing up here in their pickup trucks. It's very noisy, but worst of all, it really makes like a safety concern for our children when they go to school in the morning and when they come home from school. And I have a 16-year-old son. Yeah, I'm worried about him backing in out of the driveway with like huge vehicles going by and all this extra traffic. It's really, there are many people in the neighborhood affected by this and bothered by it. You know, I was, I don't have all the answers. I was kind of looking to the board for some ideas. One idea I had is it'd be great if there was a big sign at the entrance to subdivisions stating like no construction traffic allowed. I see these signs all over near other construction projects. You know, here we have like, you know, children crossing the street to go to school. You know, Andrew has a ton of staff. He could, you know, help enforce that with people working on his projects. I don't know if like a weight limit could be put on part of the road that intersects with the new neighborhood to keep the huge vehicles from, you know, driving past this area. There's definitely other things about the planning, and we do have a meeting with Aaron scheduled, which I do really appreciate that. But I know I'm limited on time, so I didn't want to go over that. But basically just looking for some help for the board to kind of get the ball rolling to see what can be done to help us on Damascus Trail to reduce our traffic.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else from the public would like to speak? All right, we'll move on then.
Hey, John, can I just respond? And I know we can't discuss what Brian brought up, but sometimes I feel like it's helpful to just state to Brian that we're not being silent because we don't want to talk about it, but we can't talk about it because it's not officially on the agenda. So I just wanted to point that out because sometimes I feel like it looks like we're just rudely not responding to you. So I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I wasn't expecting any sort of like immediate action by the board tonight or anything. But you know, to put that idea out there, you know, just so people start thinking about it. And I just want to thank you very much for your consideration.
Thanks, Sarah. I was actually going to touch on that, but that's, you jumped right to it, which is great. We can put it on a future agenda item, probably depending on how the conversation goes with Aaron following up with that. So we'll follow up with staff to see how that went. So thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Brian. All right, if there's nobody else from the public would like to speak, we'll move right down on to item five, and that's discussing consideration of meeting minutes from December 6th. The meeting minutes were posted in the packet. Any edits, comments, questions? Or in this case, or consideration for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you.
Thanks, Troy. Thanks, David. Any further discussion? Having heard, none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. Next up, we have slated a presentation from the board is, but if the board's okay. Larry and Rick had to stick around anyway. Is Nick Chief Archibald on? Yes, he is. If the board's okay, thanks. If the board's okay, I'd like to move Nick's staff report up to this point, so then he can go off and do other things he needs to do. Unless someone from the board has a concern. All right, Chief, you're up.
All right. So. So we're currently sitting at 37 members, consisting of eight officers, one driver, 25 firefighters, and three probationary firefighters. We're up to 317 calls for service in 2021, which is the highest so far we've ever had. We've still got a few weeks left, so that's probably going to go up a little bit more before the year's done. Monthly training for November was vehicle extrication, so using the hydraulic tools and jaws of life to cut vehicles apart, wrap, rescue trapped occupants. December, everybody's renewing their CPR certification for the monthly training. And then in January, we're going to be getting to work with Deer Grove and the Village Police to set up some ASAM training and possibly looking at doing a large-scale scenario in the future. The Volunteer Firefighters Association purchased the ultra-high-pressure fire pump for engine four. It'll be used for vehicle fires, wildland fires, and structural fire overhaul. It's just another way of fighting fires. It uses less water and it's just a different, another tool for the toolbox kind of thing. Other news, the department had five members complete entry-level firefighter class and move up in rank from probation to active firefighters. Also had two members complete the fire inspector training course. One member completed fire officer three and four certifications, and one member completed firefighter two certification. The fire department will be meeting with Matt and Aaron tomorrow, actually, to work on getting some of the plans for the commercial buildings, so we can start implementing the pre-plans and improving the pre-plans like we discussed with the MDT system. We submitted another grant request for, to the AFG for radios. The department received a grant for the Wisconsin DNR for wildland firefighting gear. As part of that grant, everybody was given their own wildland fire shirt, helmet, and gloves. This will make it so we don't have to use structural firefighting gear for wildland fires. Also, all the turnout gear that was approved has arrived and been put into place. I was asked to talk about our radio situation. It's come up a few times. And I guess I can kind of explain what's going on with them. So our radios are approximately 15 years old at this point. They're obsolete. As they fail, they cannot be repaired anymore. So the last three years, we've been writing for the AFG grant to try and replace all of them. Like I said, we just submitted that grant again for this next round. Basically, I was asked to kind of stress how important this problem's become, I guess. So if the AFG grant isn't successful, I think we're going to be looking at trying to come up with another way of replacing these radios. I attached a whole sheet explaining what we use and how much it's going to cost. That price is subject to change, obviously, with everything going on for supply and demand right now. But this is kind of to give you guys an idea. If this next round of the grants isn't successful, I think we'd be looking in 2023 to purchase some outright, and it's kind of to give a little bit of a heads up. So I don't know if anybody had any questions about that.
Any questions from board members? Chief, not from, go ahead, Melissa.
Sorry. Thanks, John. I was just going to ask, Nick, do you think that waiting to get these radios is an okay option? If we're waiting, I mean, I want to get the grant, right, because that seems like the best option. But since we won't find out till October, are we, is our department going to be okay until then?
Nick, I don't know if you know, you're on mute.
Oh, maybe he's having some technical difficulties. So that, I mean, that was kind of our concern that we brought up in fire commission is just whether it seems like kind of a dire situation, but the grant seemed to be the way we're going.
I think that, oh, go ahead, Sarah.
I was just going to ask, is the grant such that it has to actually purchase or could it pay us back? You know, if we bought it now and got the grant? No, not allowable?
That's, that's a good question, actually. I don't, I don't know.
There was another grant that Chief had brought up that another municipality had applied for. And they found out like a year later that they had gotten it, but they couldn't use it for anything else but what they had applied for with the grant. And they couldn't get it for the same price anymore. I don't know whatever happened, what they ended up doing with that.
Well, I think in the packet, Nick put in there, right, like there's a point here. You know, as radios begin to fail, it leaves our truck short. In an ideal situation, all firefighters would have their own radio. Currently, most of our trucks are set up that a two-person shares a radio. Like it just, from my perspective, right, I try to put myself in a firefighter, she's like, I want my own radio. Right? Like I just don't want to get separated because that's, that's difference in life and death right there. You know, and again, I'm not, I know we're waiting on the, on the fire study, but I, I don't know, Matt, if radios is included or if that's even a conversation topic, you know, in the final outcome. But like, in our conversations at fire committee, like this, this seems like a really big deal. Again, from a, from a completely clueless, naive perspective, and you know, I'm ignorant to this, but it just feels like, you know, radios are kind of important.
I pressed on Nick that at that meeting, he's not here to support his answer to me, but I pressed him hard. Are we running a risk? Is this potentially a safety and risk issue? And the sense that I got from him was yes. I think our concern was not really fully understanding the implications of, you know, what we're talking, you know, talking from, from a financial perspective, you know. I think we have a better understanding. I was trying to dig up my notes from that last meeting. I think we talked about it at the last meeting, that the, I think, Melissa, you went through the costs, you know, and it's pretty substantial. But the sense that I got from him was that this is, this is serious and that we do need to get these replaced.
I guess the question I have is why wasn't this brought up when we started talking about the budget? Because we should have incorporated this budget. I know that they were counting on the grant, but if it was, if it's dire now, it was probably dire in July, and it would have been really nice to have a heads up to consider this in the budget. And I don't recall it even making a request from Chief or anybody else. And so that's a little bit, because we just approved the budget, went through two weeks ago. And now we're talking 115,000. And if it's that dire, we may have to figure out how to do it. But the board will have to scratch their heads and go back into the budget, figure out what to do.
We shared that sentiment.
Can I jump back in here for a minute?
Oh, there you are, Chief.
So just to kind of explain, it was, I did put together a capital budget, list of items for a capital budget. And I submitted that earlier this year, and radios is on it in case these grants didn't go through. I think right now, we're covered right now. We have a couple spares. So some, some actually fail. We'll be fine. We're not going to be short. You know, every team will still have at least one radio. But basically, like, like we discussed, is that if this grant doesn't go through, I think we need to plan on 2023 doing that. And then in that case, it will be written into 2023's budget. So I'm not asking anybody to come up with emergency funds like today or tomorrow, even, you know. I'm just trying to make people aware of it, so when they see it come down the line, if this grant fails, nobody's caught off guard by it, I guess.
Nick, how many, how many handhelds do you have right now that are working?
I think it's in the, it's in the twenties, twenties to thirties right now. I don't have the exact count. I could probably, give me a second, I could probably figure it out.
I mean, I just, a ballpark's fine, right? So, you know, like we talked about at fire committee, we don't have to get all 40 upfront. Can, are they interchangeable? So if you bought 10 of these Kenwood Vikings, would they be interoperable with your existing fleet of portables?
Yeah. Yeah, they're, I mean, that's the same. I currently have one of these Vikings already, already in service that we're using. So, so they, they work fine with what we have. It's not like a all or nothing kind of thing.
So you could, if we got you to, so let's say, let's just say for, you can give us the number, right? But for argument's sake, let's say you had 25 radios that work today. If we got you to 40, that would get you, everybody on the department would have one because you have 37 members, and then you'd have three spares.
Correct. But what we would, we would, we wouldn't assign a radio to every person. We would put a radio in every seating position of the truck. So that on that truck, there's a radio for you. I know some departments issue all their members their own personal radio. I just, I think we'd be better off putting them in the trucks to prevent them from going missing or getting damaged. So that's, I think that's what we're going to end up doing with them, but it would still be enough that every seating position has their own radio.
So I think to my, I mean, we kind of talked about this at fire committee, right? Like we don't necessarily have to buy all 40 upfront. But if we could, obviously be nice, right, because then you could, you know, if you had all 40, you could kind of then start to change over the fleet over time, right? You would, some break, you know, new models come out and that sort of thing. But it's, I think the reality here is that we're going to have to change, we're going to have to switch over the existing ones over time, just because that's, you know, and I'm just looking at the portables, right? Like, I think, I think, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Paul and I's point was the portable seemed more important than the mounted ones in the truck. I mean, they're all important, but if you had to stack rank it, the portable seemed more important.
The portable's. I think, Nick, you're going to have to tell, Nick, you're going to have to tell us exactly what you need, all right? So I pushed you in that meeting. I said, are we at risk? And I sensed that we were. And so you're going to have to tell us, because right now, I mean, that messaging has changed. You're telling us we're not at risk.
I mean, I guess if more radios start to fail, we're going to have problems. That, that's kind of where I was at the meeting last time. But right now, we're getting by with what we have. Like I said, we issued another grant. That, unfortunately, we won't know the results of the grant until late next year. Like October, September time.
But. So again, it goes back to, what's your sense? What's your hunch of which ones are going to fail, and then we need to know that number? Or is that, is that too hard to come up with?
Yeah, I mean, anything can happen, I guess. What, what I've been doing is as my budget comes to a close here at the end of the year, when I have extra money left in the account, my plan was to actually buy a couple portables. Our actual mobiles, not the, yeah, the portables, the handheld radios. Whatever I have left in the budget that I can use this year, I'm going to buy a couple. So we'll have kind of a, maybe a cushion until we try and get us by. But like I said, this is more so just to get people aware of this in case this grant doesn't come through.
I think we also talked about that capital list. I think we need to see it prioritized, you know. And I'm not certain, when we talked about it at the fire, joint fire, if it was prioritized, your list. You know, item number one, safety and risk. Item number two, things that we foresee as potential needs. You know, something along those lines, as we move this forward so we can better understand, so we're not in the same spot here.
So, yeah, right now, the list is prioritized just by year. It's a year-over-year capital budget. But I can revamp it so that anything that's an emergency can be ranked accordingly.
I think that would be helpful. That would help, you know, flag something. If it's not verbalized, we could at least see it, you know, in documentation that, you know, we're going to make sure that that conversation comes in the forefront.
But Chief, am I hearing correctly that you don't think we'll need to come up with money in 2022 for this? That you'll buy some with your 2021 funds, hoping it gets us through 2022 and to plan for 2023? Is that what I'm hearing? Just want to confirm.
That's correct. That's correct. And I actually already, with the new engine coming, the mobile, the mobile radios, like I said in the description, are the ones that are mounted in the truck. The new engine's coming April or May. We didn't want to put a 15, you know, 15-year-old radio into a brand-new truck, and then it failed, and they have to re-modify the brand-new truck to make the new radio fit. So I already bought two new mobile radios for that truck. So when that truck is done being built, the brand-new radios are going into that truck. So we don't have to deal with this problem. Like I said, any, any money that I have left over on top of that is going to go towards portables. So we have a cushion until we find out the results of this latest round of grants. And I, I don't anticipate having to buy any in 2022 or asking you guys to come up with money in 2022 to pay for this. It would be, this is trying to plan for 2023, get you guys aware of it, because it's, it's a big-ticket item. Capital budget didn't come out to you guys that far in advance. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of it before it just popped up suddenly and you guys had to scramble and come up with a way to pay for it, I guess.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? And Chief, obviously, you have a direct connection to both the committee members as well as certainly myself and Matt. If, if you start seeing two or three of these radios failing, I don't know what the turnaround is to get them, but please let us know so that we can, we'll, we'll figure something out. We can't have firefighters out there without the equipment they need. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. We'll back on the agenda then, and this is, oops, does it move around here? Back to a presentation to board, the presentation by Staff Rosenbaum is on the opioid settlement. There is a memo in the packet, and I'm assuming either Rick or Larry are on the line, or no, we've got.
Actually, it's me. I look a lot like Larry, but.
No, not at all.
People say we act a lot alike, even if we don't look alike, but, but I am a partner with him at Stafford. So my name is Jane Landreddy. I'll just launch in here. I do work with Rick a lot. I see that Rick is there in the, in the room. Hello, Rick. We decided to come and talk about this tonight because you may have seen in the news, there's been, there's been some action on the opioid settlement litigation front. And just about a month ago, the Wisconsin, the Joint Finance Committee with the legislature approved Wisconsin's settlement in, of the proceeds. And so I just want to kind of give you all a lay of the land, because different governmental entities in Wisconsin play different roles in the, in the opioid litigation, and I just want to kind of parse that out and, and have a chance to talk through it tonight. So I do appreciate your interest in this. So we've got two huge settlements that are pending in this multi-district litigation. You might recall a couple of years ago, there was the Purdue Pharma. That, that multi-district opioid litigation made history. It was the biggest settlement in the history of our country, just huge numbers. So that's not what I'm talking about. That one is all, is all squared away and tied in a bow. Now, this is the second wave of litigation. This is against the three largest distributors in the country. And then, and then the second one is against Johnson &amp; Johnson. So this is this, this new wave of, of litigation that's coming up. And there are some municipalities in Wisconsin who may be able to be parties to that. Cottage Grove didn't quite make the population cut to get the letter from ZOJ to opt-in as a party. There's some, some similarly sized municipalities that did, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about this. But, but it was that 10,000 population threshold that they used as a cutoff. So if, if you're wondering why you, you see similar cities or villages, rather, with similar sizes yours, that, that's what that is. That's the 10,000 cut. And I, I did Google your population. It was just under, under that according to, according to Google. But so for Cottage Grove, we're not talking tonight about whether you should opt-in or not as a party. That's, that decision was kind of made for you in the, in the multi-district terms that apply across the country. It's just those threshold size municipalities that can get in. But the reason that I'm still here to talk about it is because under the new Wisconsin law, there will be an opportunity. there will be an opportunity for you, if you decide that this is a good idea, uh, to partner with the, especially with the counties, uh, that are going to receive a distribution of the settlements. So the way that this is gonna work in Wisconsin is that counties, and if there are any eligible municipalities, uh, they are gonna receive 70% of the, of the Wisconsin distributions, and then the state is gonna receive the, the remaining 30%. So villages like you in Cottage Grove could decide, uh, you know, we want to have some sort of opioid abatement program, uh, and we think that we could do this, but, you know, we could do something that the county wouldn't be able to do, or we could do it better because we're closer to the people and, and our outreach efforts would be more effective. And so even though you can't opt-in as a party, there will be an opportunity, as the dust settles on the settlement, and, and the counties, they know what they're gonna get, there will be an opportunity for you to think about whether you want to opt-in and, you know, and kind of take ownership of some piece of that. And I've seen different municipalities kind of come down different ways on that. You know, some of them say, well, you know, we don't have a health department, so maybe we don't want to, you know, we don't want to enter in that territory. We're just gonna benefit from the things that, you know, Dane County is gonna be spending money in our community, just sort of incidentally, as a matter of their, the natural order of how they're gonna spend their money. And so we'll just let that lie, and, and we'll be fine with that. Whereas other municipalities are saying, oh, you know, this has affected us personally, or as a community. We know people who were affected, and we wanna, we wanna be players in that. And so, uh, I just, I, I, that's the bottom line, is that there's no action for you, either way, to opt-in or not to the settlement. You're gonna be situated, when it comes time to decide whether you want to opt-in to an agreement with the county, you are situated exactly like Oregon, even though they made the cut so that they could opt-in. Uh, opting in or not to the settlement, you know, being a party has nothing to do with your ability to, to enter into an agreement with the county. So, um, we're too early for that to happen now, uh, even as other municipalities are making the decision whether to opt-in or not. You don't make that decision, you don't have to make that decision now, uh, since, since you can't opt-in. Uh, but it is a good time to start thinking about whether you would like to make the policy decision to opt-in when the time comes. Sorry, I didn't mean to say to opt-in. I meant to say, enter into a voluntary agreement, uh, with the county, eh, to do some of these things yourself. What we do know is that, uh, there, there will be a restriction on the funds, uh, even if they're the subject of a voluntary agreement. You know, even if you get funds from the county, not directly as the settlement proceeds, they're gonna have to go to opioid abatement. And we'll know exactly what that means, more precisely, once the dust has settled on the, on the litigation. Right now, you know, it remains to be seen just precisely what, what kind of parameters are gonna, are gonna be placed on those funds, uh, that you'd have to stick to. But, um, so that's, that's the bottom line. It's just, this is a good time to start thinking about which policy direction you might want to take as a board on that. So I'm happy to open it up for discussions, if there's any, anything that wasn't clear about all this. It's a huge, it's a huge thing going on, and, and trying to make it just into a simple message for you. Uh, you know, as the municipalities are trying to figure out all kinds of different factors. But, um, happy to, happy to discuss.
Alright, are there any questions from board members for Jane?
I was wondering, how can the funds be used?
Well, so we know for sure that they are gonna have to be used for some sort of opioid abatement. You know, I think, for the counties, that's gonna be easier, easier to figure out. You know, they've got things that their county health departments do that, um, you know, that they're used to doing. For a village like Cottage Grove, I think you, you might have to get kind of creative to think about what kinds of things would make sense for you to do, uh, that might fall into the parameters that, that get toward opioid abatement. But you know, when, if I were just kind of thinking off the top of my head about what might make sense, you know, there, to the extent that there are public outreach types of tasks that, that would come under this, that, that's the kind of thing that seems to make more sense on, on the local level with people who are closer, you know? Um, you know, but, yeah, it, it's, it's hard to say for sure until we know exactly what the parameters will be on what, you know, what counts as opioid abatement. Um, but, uh, and, you know, and I think there are villages and cities across the state who are, who are thinking exactly about this. So there might be, uh, an opportunity for kind of a brain trust. Um, certainly, the League of Municipalities attorneys are, are talking about this on their last call. So, you know, uh, we might have more ideas as, as people start to think about this more.
And is this something that our police department could use?
Perhaps, yeah. Police training could be, that, that is one that could definitely make a lot of sense to happen at the local level. That's a great example of something that might make more sense than, than for the, the funds to go through the county. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much for having me.
Oh. Any other questions for Jane before she signs off?
I just have a quick one, Jane. Um, thank you for this presentation. Um, I know things can take longer than expected, or, you know, challenges and all sorts of things that can hold things up. But are we talking roughly six months, a year, over a year? How far away are we?
I am so happy that you gave me the out. Uh, this is to make it clear, you're not gonna hold me to this, but I think it could, this could happen, kind of, what I'm imagining it happening is, by the end of 2022, the dust could settle.
Okay, it's good to just kind of, yeah, get a general feeling for how long we have, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Jane, do you think you'll come back and talk to us about what you're learning about what the money can be used for? Before we have to decide if we want to.
I'd be happy to. Yeah, and that's, I'm so glad you asked that question, because there's a piece of this that I, it's kind of skimmed over. Well, I skipped over it, actually. And that is that there is, you know, there's $400 million for Wisconsin, and that's gonna be paid over, I don't know, 10 years. So it's not like there's gonna be necessarily a, a point in time that you have to pick a path. Uh, it could be that you have ideas, you know, you see things that other people are doing, you know? Um, so, I mean, certainly, there will be an opportunity to revisit this discussion, and I, I, I plan to stay engaged in the opioid issue. So I would love to, to come back and talk about what I've learned at that time, when the settlement is finalized. But I think this could be something you kind of think about, you know, in your, in going forward, long-term, too, as, as needs change, as, as you, as you think of, think of things. Unfortunately, I'm afraid we're gonna have a long time with our opioid crisis, um, uh, to have those conversations. Uh, and you know, I did, so, coming back to, to that 400 million in Wisconsin, that's what we know. We have some certainty that that's what's gonna be for Wisconsin, regardless of how many other states and municipalities across the country end up, uh, being, because the Joint Finance Committee did approve that number. So that, that gives it some finality. I did do some math, you know, just for Oregon, because I wanted to give you just kind of a similar, look at a, a village with a similar size, to just kind of think, okay, how did that shake down? If, I mean, they are also not allowed to be in the, to opt-in as a party, eh, eh, and actually get direct proceeds for reasons that I don't need to bore you with here. But, uh, according to my math, they would have gotten about $160,000 from, from the settlement. And so, since they're a similar size, of course, that number doesn't mean anything. You could, since you would be entering into voluntary agreements, you could pick, you could pick a number to propose to the county about what makes sense, um, a number that was relation, relational to what kind of program you imagine. But, that, that gives you some sense of the number.
Alright, thanks again, Jane.
Alright, thank you, take care.
Yes. We'll move on then, to, uh, new business. And that first one is, discuss and consider moving our Village Board of Trustees meeting from Monday, January 17th, which is MLK Day, uh, to Tuesday, uh, January 18th.
Works for me.
Yeah, I think that works.
Any, anybody have concerns with that, or scheduling issues? As long as we have a quorum, we'll be in good shape, but.
I may have a conflict, but I'll try to change it.
I'm in the same spot, but I think I can get it worked out.
If not, you're still in form. I'm not there, so.
Okay.
Me, to be honest with you, that, uh, Wednesday night works really better for me. The 19th.
I have library board that night, but it works better for others.
Actually, actually, it, it can't be changed. We have a special EMS meeting on the 18th.
That's what I was curious on Troy, but I don't have my calendar in front of me, so, okay.
Yeah, no, I just wanted my notes. Yeah. I couldn't remember what I had, but now I figured it out. So, yeah, we have a special EMS meeting to review the study results from, uh, P A A that evening.
Isn't that joint with, um, the Village Board?
What was that, Melissa?
Isn't that supposed to be joint with the Village Board?
The, the EMS one is, Melissa, because it, it's a contract with Durob EMS. It's only the fire study that's, um, that's Village. That, that, that's why the Village Board was there for, for that discussion.
Got it, okay.
How about Thursday, the 20th?
Well, what, did the 19th not work for everybody?
Sounded like there was a meeting on the 19th. Alright.
I was just leaving it on Monday.
Well, we're trying to avoid that now.
Because it's all.
Well, we, we had our, our meeting for, what, July 5th, which is technically a holiday for everybody. We're gonna be meeting then, I'm just trying to figure out why we're, we're skirting this one.
Um, because Diversity, um, Equity and Inclusion Committee reviewed our policies on meeting on holidays, and we're, um, our goal is to avoid doing that, because that is a day that staff has off. But if we have a Village Board meeting, then they really don't have it off.
And they didn't have the 5th off last year, or this year?
Um, right, we, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee looked at it after the 5th. So you're correct that we did on the 5th, but we reviewed that policy after July.
So you're looking at all holidays as it relates to rec, not only recognizing the holiday, but equally as important, the village staff have off those days. And I, I would be sensitive to that. Otherwise, I'd have been with Troy, why don't we just meet on Monday, the 19th? If the staff didn't have off.
I think we added that as a, didn't we add MLK Day just a few meetings ago as a paid holiday? Or was that already on the list?
Um, I think, I think that was the one we added.
Yeah, so I think it's officially in a, a holiday for staff, so they won't, aren't scheduled to be working.
Yeah, yeah, then I would.
Just so everyone's aware, I, I would think, speak for most staff, that, I mean, we can certainly flex our time, so don't make the decision based on staff. Um, I, I, I took it more from a D E I perspective of, um, looking around, most, most places do not meet on Martin Luther King Day.
So do we have a, will we have a quorum on the 18th as proposed?
No, the 18th is when Troy and I have EMS. I mean, maybe you'd have a quorum without the two of us, but.
I can't do the 18th.
So no. But did the 19th work for everyone?
The 18th and the 20th is bad for me, but I probably could juggle those two days. The 20th, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean to complicate things, but.
What about the 19th, Paul?
Yeah, I'd be open on 19th, yeah. You just double check.
I have a meeting on the 19th.
Um, I'm fairly sure.
We have one there versus several on the 18th.
How about if we just, you know, go another week, go to the 24th then? Are there Monday meetings?
Joint Fire on the 24th.
Okay.
Are they, or is it the 31st?
If you start trying to move these meetings, it's very difficult to get the schedules to align, you know? Uh, I hate to say if I set my schedule, you know, calendar up based on schedules that are kind of existing, and when it comes to moving targets, it's, it's hard to get several people together on the same day, unfortunately.
Yeah, I can, I can appreciate that, Troy, but you asked about the 19th, if it means me being there to have a quorum. I, I'm available the 19th, Wednesday, 19th.
Other than Troy, do, does anyone else have conflict on the 19th? Okay, uh, would that work for the rest of us? I'm getting nods. Okay, and then we can catch Troy up on, uh, on, on that meeting. Obviously, it's recorded, too. Because as we just found out, there's all kinds of conflicts moving in, in the other place, too, as well. Alright, so this is Discuss and Consider.
I make a motion to move the January 17th, 2022, meeting from Monday, the 17th, to Wednesday, January 19th, 2022, starting at 6:30 PM.
Agreed.
Is there, alright, thanks Paul, thanks David. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Uh, next item is Discuss and Consider Resolution 2021-07, uh, regarding, uh, the Election Inspector Appointments. Uh, there was, again, the resolution was included in the packet, listed down. Um, so any questions, comments regarding this?
Um, I just wanted to point out that I'm on the list as an election inspector, but when my name is on the ballot, I don't participate during those elections. So I just want to put that out there.
I, I'm just curious why we have someone on the list that's not a, a resident of Cottage Grove?
Good question, Troy. Um, we get lists from, um, the two political parties, or I should say, we got a list from the Republican Party, and those people are listed, and they can be an election inspector as long as they are a resident of the Comptee. That was changed a few years ago, and they have agreed to do that. So, um, we have to put them on as an inspector, uh, because they are, um, requested by the party.
I'll move that we approve the Resolution 2021-07, Election Inspector Appointments for the memo written and the list that was presented.
Second.
Is there, alright, motion second then? Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Oh, thank you, Melissa, I was waiting. Um. Next item is to discuss, excuse me, Discuss and Consider a 2022 Sound Permit for Downdren's Distilling.
Abby Abramovich, I'm here, guys, so hopefully you can hear me, in case anybody has any questions.
Alright, thanks, thanks for being here. Um, the permit is, is in the packet. Um, any questions regarding that, either from the applicant or in general, from board members?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 Sound Permit for Downdren's Distilling, Distilling.
Alright, thanks, Troy, thanks, Paul. All right. Thanks, Troy. Thanks, Paul. Um, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Following right on that then is discuss and consider the twenty twenty-two host permit for, uh, Downdrins.
A motion to approve the twenty twenty-two host permit for Downdrins Distilling.
Thanks, Paul.
Second.
Thanks, Troy. Any, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Next up, we have discuss and consider a Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero nine, uh, Resolution authorizing the village administrator to close real estate transaction. The resolution is in the packet. Any questions from board members?
I can just give you a little, uh, summary of why you're seeing this. Um, basically, the,
Thanks, Rick.
The board approved the real estate tran- transaction with the J E K C R E. The title company wanted a formal resolution, just allowing Matt to take all the necessary steps to finalize the closing. So basically, they just wanted something in writing from the board, so that's why you're seeing this resolution.
Thanks, Rick, for the background. All right, any comments, questions from board members? Or again, this is a discuss and consider.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh nine regarding a resolution authorizing the village administrator to close real estate transaction.
Second.
All right, thanks, Melissa, and thanks, David. Um, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Moving then down to, uh, reports from village boards, commissions and committees, starting off with, uh, Public Works and Properties Committee. I'll take, uh, that one first. So we met on, uh, December seventh. Covered, um, just an update on the Stormwater Pond land purchase. At that point, it was, it was slowly continuing to progress, and that is the Stormwater Pond at the end of Clark, uh, street for the Clark, uh, street renovation, rest- restoration work next year. Um, this would be just, uh, if you drove right into the field off of Clark, on bios there, maybe in, in that area off of the, uh, the railroad tracks. And so we're working with the own, owner of that property to put in a Stormwater retention pond. Um, so that's what that was regarding. Uh, next, we discussed the ARPA eligible projects. Uh, in this case, um, the proposed leaf truck discussion, uh, the committee discussed that. The committee prior, prior to this discussed the Thaden Pond restoration, as well as the sewer interceptor that would go through the farm property, and still felt that those two projects were higher priority for the ARPA funds rather than leaf truck. Then we had the update from the engineer, Josh, and then JJ, uh, some number of the projects there. We're meeting next on January fourth. JJ, uh, anything I missed?
Nope, I think you got it.
All right. Um, moving then to Utility Commission, Heidi.
Thanks, John, and I may look to JJ to help me out here, cause my notes are pretty light. Um, so we met on December eighth, and, uh, next year, we're gonna be going over the water and sewer system, kinda reevaluate the capital improvement plan with Strand more in depth, um, and get into, um, you know, if we need to move anything around or, um, modify the capital improvements. Um, we also talked about the leaf truck memo, and Utility had discussed the, a few other options previously. Um, there's also some thoughts to maybe think about, um, privatizing leaf pickup. Um, so kind of more information on that, and I still felt the other two projects were, uh, high priority. Um, that was basically it, other than just a overview of the reports. I don't know. JJ, do you have anything to add?
Nope, I think you got it. We had a pretty light meeting.
Yep. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't forgetting anything. Thanks.
Thanks, Heidi. Um, next up then, we have Plan Commission, and we do have, uh, a few items here for the board to consider as well. I'll run through, um, the commission meeting, and then, uh, we'll get to each of these discussing considers. So, and then, Melissa, feel free to jump into as well. Um, we met on December eighth. Covered, um, a site plan amendment for Hydrate Chemical, which is again, is discussing consider for the board. Um, the commission supported that, and again, this is for a treatment, uh, system building that would be at their one one four North Main Street, site. Um, also discussed a site plan amendment for J E K R C R E. And that was to wi- mainly to widen the curb cuts, um, for that, and again, the commission was supportive of that. We discussed ordinance thirteen two zero two one, um, petition for, uh, utility annex, uh, for seventy-nine, uh, acres. That was tabled, so that's not on the list. Um, and so that one will come back soon. Had a public hearing on input for an ordinance, ordinance change regarding, uh, village zoning ordinance related to utilities, and again, that one's, uh, before the board as well. Um, and again, the commission was supportive, supportive of that following the public hearing. There was, uh, really no, um, no one from the public weighed in on it, um, but the commission was supportive of it. Uh, discussed a consideration for the leaf, or consideration for the leafback, um, for use of ARPA funds. The commission recommend the board consider that. And discussed rescheduling our meeting, um, from the ninth of February to the sixteenth. And, um, that was fine. I think we have one member that can't make it. All right, so with that, did I miss anything, Melissa?
Nope, you got it all.
Okay. So then we'll go to discussing considers. Um, so the first one is discussing, excuse me, discussing consider application for a site plan amendment for Hydrate Chemical to construct a treatment, uh, system building located at one one four North Main Street. Is anyone from Hydrate on, on the call tonight?
Yes, Jamie Dixon's here. I was at the planning commission, um, to ask questions or answer any questions.
Okay. So Jamie, since, um, a number of, besides Melissa and I, I don't know if other board members heard what you guys are planning.
So it would be helpful, I think, for you to kind of walk through, similar to what you did for the planning commission. Sure thing. So, uh, basically, we're proposing a shallow plume capture system that's around the neighborhood of Roosevelt Park. It consists of two wells that are already installed, were installed last year, and it'll pump and treat, um, that water with a advanced oxidation, uh, sequential batch reactor system, which we've got approval for both the discharge and the design from the state as of, uh, the sixteenth of December. And, uh, plans on doing that and operating discharging to a storm sewer manhole that's, uh, that's there, and then ultimately goes to Arrowhead Estates Pond, uh, treated water that would be clean. So the system basically goes, the treatment building be located in the property, back corner of the property, um, and be paved to the access to allow chemical delivery and stuff. It uses hydrogen peroxide and ozone to treat the contaminants concerned to below and basically mineralize them before it's discharged out the outfall to the, the limits of the state requires. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Jamie?
Um, thanks for preparing the, uh, background information. Jamie and I looked at in the planning commission, um, packet. I was wondering, um, so just wanna make sure I get the timeline right. We installed the monitoring wells, so now that water needs to be treated.
They're extraction wells, um, yeah. So basically, the, the system is two extraction wells we put in, will be hooked on and trenched through the park, um, back to the, uh, treatment facility, and then discharged with that same trench deeper all the way to the, the storm sewer that's further away. Um, that is, is in plan. We're trying to get the pad done and all this, but we need the permit first, which we're working on the conditional approvals for the, um, erosion control plan before we start the work, and that's in progress. Hopefully, we have that soon.
Um, so the, the other option would be to send the water through the sewer system. So is there a reason why you chose to do onsite treatment versus sending it through, uh, municipal sewer?
The municipal sewers doesn't, do not want to take any additional, uh, sewage untreated or treated before, uh, adds to their volume capacity. So this is the best way to maintain the water actually in the facility for the groundwater as well, or, you know, basically a balance of the recharge of the water that's extracted from the same area. Couple reasons.
Sure. And I guess that, that's all I can think of at the moment. Thanks.
Jamie, you said, uh, the contaminants be, will be minimized? I think is what your terminology was.
Yeah, so basically, it's, it's a chemical oxidation procedure. It uses hydrogen peroxide, uh, which is activated using ozone and flow levels of ozone and peroxide. And what that does is chemically oxidizes those contaminants to break them down into, basically eliminating the contaminants into just like carbon and, and other non-hazardous, non-toxic type items.
So there's no, there's, there's nothing that's gotta be hauled away from, from this facility or whatever?
That's correct. There's no, there's no, um, no waste that should be generated. Uh, we did a preliminary evaluation for like solids generation. That would be the only thing. We had some solids buildup, and that didn't precede any significant amounts. And even the solids would just be like metals and whatever precipitates come out of the system.
And this technology has been, I'm assuming, used before?
Yeah, I have a system that's using it for one-pot dioxide and similar chemicals out at Quidby Island in Washington State that's operating, has been operating successfully. That's a continuous batch reactor system. This one's just sequential. Either way, the chemistry is the same.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other questions for Jamie, for board members?
I guess I, I wonder how often will be, uh, water tested to make sure that it's not failing?
The state requires monthly testing of it, and during the startup procedures, we're gonna have a, a more frequent to make sure that it meets it in a, in a more frequent sampling, probably weekly or daily. And we're actually, before we do the initial discharge, we'll probably treat a batch and, and then test it to make sure that it's clean before we do the initial discharge. So we can verify right away, and then we're going to, uh, continue to do it weekly for like the first month or two. Then after that, it goes to monthly by the requirements of the state, uh, permit.
Jamie, this is.
It might be weekly. PH is weekly, PH is weekly. I have the permit right in front of me. Benzene's weekly, so we have weekly for the, um, sample frequency, and then the reported monthly. So it'll be weekly sampled. I apologize.
Jamie, this is Heidi again. Um, do you be open to sharing, um, testing data with staff?
Sure.
So we can relay peace of mind to neighbors?
Yeah, anything that we receive, we can, we can share with your staff. Just to, you have contact who needs it, an email or whatever. We can email that data as it comes in. It's no problem.
Any other questions from board members? Otherwise, this is a discuss and consider. Again, the planning commission, uh, recommended approval.
Oh, I do have one other question. Um, the land disturbance for installation, if, if we could kind of be notified in case we have any programming, um, taking place at Houston Park?
Yes, it's part of the conditional approval from the planning commission as well, but I, I agree, that will be noticed ahead of time, and that's probably not gonna happen until spring, and then we'll coordinate before we start the construction at that time.
Great.
Cause I think we need to notify the neighbors.
Are there, are there staff conditions to go over at all, or that's all in the memo?
It's in the memo, but you can turn it over to, to certainly Aaron if he has anything, or Josh.
Yeah, they're in the memo, and we touched on a couple of them. Um, the first one, I guess, is just kind of making clear that the actual permission to hook up to the system is coming from the DNR and from JJ as the public works director. What we're really approving here is, you know, the building and the trenching, you know, related to the zoning, that kind of thing. We talked about the notice to the neighbors. That was a requirement from when this went to the park committee, uh, a while back. We'll want Josh to see the, uh, full erosion control and, uh, site restoration details prior to issuing a land disturbance permit. Uh, obviously, any disturbance in the park needs to be completely restored, and then, as we talked about, at least two weeks prior to starting, um, have them contact Sean to coordinate what's going on at the park. Do you want to touch on any of yours?
One other little piece of the design that's, that's, um, good to see is they have a, of a sensor in the downstream storm sewers, manhole that they're connecting to, so that when that storm sewer sees a high rain event, it will, it will shut down their, their water treatment and their water they're sending to at that time. So, um, you don't have to be worried about that having extra water during, during the storm arrive, so.
The intent for that is, it's Unistrut mounted, um, float switch that's loaded that could be adjusted, but will be well below the, uh, top of the surcharge, so we couldn't surcharge it. And that will, uh, trip out the system and stop the extraction wells from pumping. It might gravity drain whatever is residual in the tank, but then after that, there's no other additional pumping. If you need to see it in detail, we can draw it up and get it over to you. Just let me know.
All right, any other questions, comments from board members?
I guess, I, I wanted to ask, and, and, and I'm just catching up here, Jamie, so apologies. You know, if somebody asked me, you know, like, yeah, and I've read, I think I've read through all the materials, but I, it, it's not jumping out at me, and I guess the, the why behind the project. I guess, just to ask that quite, just in, in layman's terms.
Yes, in layman's term, there's a, there's a shallow plume that was discovered, uh, about two years ago with temporary wells that was emanating out of the park and could be going towards the people's basements, and we want to draw it back and capture it so that we prevent that from happening and take clean water from other places to people's basements, so we don't have any vapor intrusion issues or anything that could develop from the low level, uh, concentrations that are there. So that's really the whole point, is, is safety of the thing and capture of the plume, so it does not leave the site and it's controlled and treated.
Can you, can you define channel plume for me?
What, what, uh, plume? Basically shallow, so there's the, the water that's, it's about, um, twenty feet down, I believe, under the park is where the groundwater flows. And there's like a place in the, um, in the geology where they kind of found a way out, going shortcut to the, the pond, basically, which then emanates under that neighborhood, uh, based on the groundwater conditions. That wasn't discovered before that during the other investigations. They were focusing on a deeper, um, plume. And when that was discovered, then we started installing these wells so that we could have a capture system, uh, that would, would capture these two parts, and we could take all that plume back, clean it up, treat it, and then discharge it, and then prevent it from leaving the site in the future until it's treated and disposed of down the road.
Okay, and then the only other thing I see in the packet, and this is a random question, um, there's like a, is it an aerial, it's, it looks like, I guess, the building type that it's gonna be, is it, is it a permanent building site?
It's a permanent building. It's, it's made out of a, a heavy-duty fabric structure. I've got two of these built out in, uh, Western Washington right now, and I built one in Dayton, Ohio before. It's an insulated structure. It's a heavy-duty frame, uh, and it's just got a, a tan material, and it's actually insulated to R forty or whatever, R thirty-nine, I believe. Um, so it takes literally little heat, much heat to, uh,
I didn't, apologies. Like, I'm, I'm catching up here. I, I did catch that earlier, but I didn't put it in there, so apologies.
And, uh, that building can be re, re, re-strung with new fabric, uh, in like twenty years if it was necessary. Hopefully, the, the system would be done before that timeframe, but worst case, it's, it can be reconfigured without a lot of cost and work, um, disturbance.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions for Jamie, or again, this is discuss and consider?
I'll move to approve the application for the site plan amendment for Hydrate Chemical Company to construct a treatment system building located at one fourteen North Main Street, um, with all of the conditions. of the conditions that I've laid out in the memo.
Is there a second? Thanks Melissa. Thanks Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none. All those in favor then?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Okay. Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next item then is discuss and consider request for a site plan amendment approval from J E K C R E for a multi-tenant retail building on parcel 0711-041-2020-1 located at the northeast corner of Highway N and Limestone Pass. Do we have a representative from J E K C R E?
Yep, you've got Matt Grogman here.
All right. Hey, Matt.
Hi.
So Matt was on plant commission. So Matt, again, as I told Jamie prior, most of the board has not had a chance to, to hear what you have shared with the plant commission. So if you kind of relay what you guys are asking for.
Sure. So upon refinement of the traffic patterning, and I think this was at the request of some of the village oversight and, and engineering, you know, we had allowed ample sort of traffic patterning on the site in space. Our civil engineer, Quam, out of McFarland, did some additional turning radius patterning specifically for the semis. What we're really kind of focused on here is the ability for Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin Robbins to receive deliveries, which we believe will be more weekly than daily, but still having full-size semis be able to get into and out of the site properly. It was noted that the, the turning radius study that was done showed that at the current park limits, the trucks would end up going up and over curbing. So we're asking for variance to allow us to have wider curb cuts, essentially a wider driveway apron for the, the durability and the longevity of the curbs that are going to be in place. Again, this is essentially one of those things where the semis are going to have to do what they have to do. And if the curbs aren't wide enough, I'm sorry, if the driveways aren't wide enough, the drivers, you know, in, in many circumstances, end up just driving over things. You get pitting out of the, the dirt and the grass in between the sidewalk and, and the road. And then over time, it kind of breaks down the curb. So we're trying to head that off and just make sure that everything is properly sized for the traffic coming into and out of the site. So that's the, kind of the genesis of where we're at here.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Aaron, you have any staff comments?
Yeah, we didn't have any conditions on the approval. Between trying to space the driveway out as far away from the intersection as possible, working around an existing hydrant, there are some kind of difficulties with the site that kind of put the driveways where they are and make them a little bit tricky as far as the access. So we'd rather have the wider driveways than the broken curbs and ripped up terrace. The memo also mentioned some changes to the elevation. Those will be coming back at a future meeting. I think Matt was still working on those with the tenant.
Correct.
All right. Josh, any comments from you?
No, I, I think Aaron said, pointed it out well. You know, typically here, the way the ordinance reads is it's 24 feet wide right at the back of sidewalk for these driveways. And just the way this is laid out and like you were saying, you know, landmark drive even from the north has that median in it. So it's hard to utilize the old roadway to turn in. And we worked with the applicant to understand how they were gonna, you know, bring in trucks and go around their site. And just like the applicant was, was pointing out, there is a truck turning template so they can run right in their CAD programs that you can see how they're gonna track. So, you know, we worked with them to try to figure out if there was any other options. But the wider aprons and driveway openings make the most sense. So we suggested they come back and get approval for that because it was outside of the ordinance.
Didn't we originally, wasn't there a variance originally for this site, or am I wrong? At least for the driveway. I could be wrong. I mean, there were, I know there were other variances, but I'm just trying to keep track of them.
We had a conditional use for the drive-through, if that's what you're thinking of.
Yeah, okay. That's, thank you. That's what I needed, man. When I, when I look at the packet, there's two different drawings. One says 30 feet and one says 38 feet on the, on the west, oh, east. Okay, I see what I'm looking at now. So I guess, how wide are we looking at, at the end of the day here?
We, I believe one is 30 and the other is close to 36. Don't have it right open in front of me, but I believe that's about where they're at.
So the, the south needs 38 and the east entrance needs 36? Do I have that right, Matt?
I apologize. I also don't have it in front of me. I'm, I'm actually traveling and, and out of state right now. But I believe that's, I believe the south is 30, I, I believe the south is the more narrow. And I think we had more than one option based on which direction the track, the, the trucks were gonna be coming from. It needed a, a wider apron to come from a specific direction versus the other. So we're, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out what, what works and what makes the most sense. And then also, you know, be able to communicate that to the delivery folks. So, so it changes the width requirement based on which direction the trucks are coming from.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, in all the documentation, it doesn't say exactly what the variance, just for the entrances, is. Just says acceptance of wider driveway aprons.
David, the, the standard was 24, I think, set by the, I think it's actually set by the-
Your-
Commerce Park.
Yeah.
I believe. So that was what was originally thought to be. But obviously this, the truck turning radius changed, changed that equation. And certainly civil engineering has figured out what they need to be. So that, this is just coming back to say, we'd like to make them what they need to be.
Yep. I, I think I get your question here. And now I've got it open and looking at it. So if we look at, there, there are two traffic studies done. And one shows, you know, eastbound, south entrance, it needs to be 30 wide. But if the truck path comes from the other direction, westbound, south entrance, then it needs to be 38 wide. So we would be asking for the, the wider of the applicable widths. That way, the truck traffic can come from either way and not negatively impact the curbing.
So 36?
So we would be looking at 36 and 38.
Okay, cool. Sorry.
Sorry.
Wanted to make sure, you know-
No, I, I get the question. It wasn't really specifically clearly bulleted.
Cool. Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question about the rationale behind the smaller driveway width? Is it easier for pedestrians to cross? Or I guess what's the, the purpose of having the smaller? Like, what are we compromising here by allowing it to be wider? Is it just the, the look and aesthetics? Or is it something safety? Just so we can maybe promote safe crossing in the area for, you know, wa, walking around Commerce Park?
Yeah, I, I would think that you wanted it to be uniform in that case. You know, 24 feet is a pretty standard opening for a commercial site. You're right. As, as it gets wider, that's just more sidewalk that you have to cross that has potential conflicts of vehicles entering and exiting. So you tend to keep them smaller if you can and, and not, not as many of them if you can too, you know. So, yeah, 24, I, I think is not a bad approach. It's just in this case, and the way the trucks coming in and out, and the size of trucks that they're getting in and kind of the turning radiuses of their site make it difficult, you know, to make those movements.
Yeah, I agree. We want to make it functional. Just wondering what will, we have to look at a different downside. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, again, this is discuss and consider.
I'll move to approve the site plan amendment from G J E K C R E for a multi-tenant retail building on parcel number 0711-041-2020-1 located at the northeast corner of Highway N and Limestone Pass with staff conditions.
I'll second.
All right. Thanks, David. Thanks, Melissa. Any further discussion? Having heard none then? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Matt. Next up is, again, discuss and consider ordinance 14-2021 regarding an amendment to chapter 325 of the village zoning ordinance related to utility land uses. Memo in the packet from commission. Aaron, do you want to kind of walk through this since you've been living this?
Yeah, so this kind of stems from some meetings that we had at the plant commission with the Lions presenting a potential substation project. They've since withdrawn that project, which is gonna go down in the old business park on Bonnie Road. But the plant commission was looking for a little more discretion on where that type of project could be allowed. Currently, substation has kind of lumped in with other public service and utility functions that are allowed pretty widely through different districts. So what this ordinance amendment would do is create a separate land use specifically for electric substations. Would allow them only in general industrial, heavy industrial or rural holding districts. So in most cases, a rezone would be required to allow the project. And then we did put some additional regulations on it related to limiting outdoor storage unless it's specifically approved by the village, some landscaping buffer requirements, requirement for distribution and transmission lines to be placed underground unless the village determines it's infeasible to do so. There are some state regulations that can impact that. And then requiring any fencing to be opaque when it's adjacent to a residentially zoned property.
Any questions, comments from board members?
A motion to approve ordinance 14-
Oh, sorry. I just have-
Oh, you got a question?
I just have a question. Yeah. So this would then make it so that the substation that they wanted to put over here on Bonnie would not be an appropriate site. Is that correct?
If they came back with that, and they have withdrawn that application. But if they came back on that site, they would have to get a rezone, which-
Got it.
We have a little more ability to say no to that where it was permitted years before.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, I think Paul's ready.
Right. I'll motion to approve the ordinance 14-2021 regarding an amendment to chan, uh, channel 325, the village zoning ordinance related to utility land use. Dave?
Thanks. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none. All those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right. Then we'll move right to the next one, which is the ad hoc architectural committee. We met on December 9th. We covered the J E K C R E. Architectural Committee was supportive of that and the board just approved that item. And then we were gonna talk about some material changes to jump around gymnastics, but they didn't have them in time to have the architecture review committee look at it. So that was tabled. Paul, anything I missed?
Nope. You covered it, Jen.
Okay. Next up, we have the police commission. It's chief on, or lieutenant?
I'm here, John.
All right. Take it away.
Yeah, that, yeah, that meeting on the 9th was for the sergeant promotion. And so the police commission interviewed two candidates. And we then selected Jeff Comstock, who works our third shift, to be the next sergeant for Cottage Grove Police Department.
Any questions for chief? I think everybody saw the, the memo too. Congrats to the new sergeant. We'll move then to the ad hoc sustainability committee. Heidi, I was there, but I, I'm tired of talking. So go for it.
Sure. We'll give you a break, but feel free to chime in if I miss something. We met on the 14th of December and we gave a budget update. There are a few sustainability initiatives in it. So we'll have some work to do next year. We also talked about grant opportunity that committee member is gonna kind of take the lead on to see if we can. But the timing of the grant application is not really ideal with budget cycles for municipalities. But we're gonna see if we can get enough information together to apply to offset some of the costs of the solar panels. We also were reaching out to village residents that have had solar panels installed in their homes to see if, kind of get some feedback on the process and to see if they would like to participate in a informational video about residential solar, which would be produced by Clean Wisconsin. So that's gonna kind of start filming in January. And one of the committee members has worked with them in the past. We'll also have some information in the upcoming community guide. And we had a discussion about the leaf truck proposal with the ARPA funds also. Just kind of some, a lot to take into consideration on successful leaf programs. So I think they provided a lot of input and different perspectives on pros and cons and challenges of leaf programs. So, I don't know. Jen, you have anything to add?
Uh, nope. Nothing, nothing. I covered it. All right. Move right then down to library board. Melissa?
I'm going to ask JJ to help me out with this because I was not at the meeting. Unfortunately, I had something else that evening. But so if, JJ, if you can chime in?
I will do my best. Briefly reviewed the positions and the responsibilities that were decided at the prior meeting. Then there was discussion about the bylaws and that there'd be some back and forth emails. And then once we think we've got a handle on it, have a legal team review it, which Rick and Larry now have in their possession. And then there was just kind of discussion around the plan for sending out the RFP for the feasibility consultant. Determined we want to send that out widely, as widely as we can. And actually, the library board wanted to post it publicly as well. So we'll be working on that at the next meeting. And I believe that may have been most of it.
All right. Thanks, JJ. Moving then down to ordinance review committee. Heidi, we have a discuss and consider here too as well.
We do have a discuss and consider. I'll just briefly mention that we talked about the 2021 budget, quarter three to date expenses. And then the, it was a preliminary budget when I made the agenda, but our 2022 ordinance line item. And then we talked with a resident who I believe is with us. Yes, there's Mike Harris. He submitted an ordinance review form to the committee to have us discuss the pool fence requirement, which we discussed earlier this year. So the committee felt that the board should know that we're getting additional residents that are interested in having us change this ordinance and providing additional information. So Mike's here and I believe Megan Bowers also on the line interested in this ordinance. So see if we would like to- the line interested in this ordinance. So um, see if we would like to have a new decision on the topic. Um, Mike, if, if you want to.
Yeah, can you, can you hear me?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, great. Well, uh, thank you for the opportunity to address um, the board here. I do realize the topic was brought up earlier. Unfortunately, we uh, just became residents late in the summer, so we weren't a part of that process. Uh, we were surprised to see how it went through and we had missed it. It was kind of ironic, but um, my wife, Jess and I, we decided to put a pool in. Uh, we understood we were taking on a risk and we needed to manage it appropriately. Um, we did a lot of research. Um, before we got started, we ran the impression that uh, fence was a superior means of protecting the pool area. Um, as we got into the topic, we learned about the International Code Council and the Association of Pool and Spa Professionals. That they came together and established, they set a swimming pool, they did codes called International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. Um, it's all new to us, but since twenty fifteen, um, that code deemed that an auto cover wasn't acceptable means of protecting a pool in lieu of a fence. And uh, this code was adopted by numerous states, municipalities across the country, including several of our neighbors such as Manona, McFarland, Wanakee and Deerfield. Um, this code, the ISPSC, really leans on the American standard for testing materials. There's a standard with a designation F thirteen forty-six ninety-one. Um, it goes into pretty great detail talking about uh, the requirements of a pool cover and the fact that uh, it needs withstand four hundred eighty pounds of uh, weight, which is two adults and a child uh, on average. Um, there's a perimeter deflection test uh, so that no objects can enter the pool if the uh, cover is in place. Um, we do have an auto cover and you know, for hours, uh, there's very clear guidelines of how it need to be installed with this pin pad that only my wife and I have the pin for. Um, we must hold a button the entire time. It's either opening or closing. So the two of us are the only ones who have um, the ability to open or close the pool. Um, conversely with the fence, as we know, that, that they are uh, certainly uh, good many ways, but there is a gate and that then leads to many opportunities for that to left open, unlocked, et cetera. So in the end, we recognize that both fences and auto covers have their pros and cons. Uh, but since the ISPSC has deemed that both effective solutions, um, we should feel, we feel it should be the choice of the pool owner uh, to manage that risk as they see fit, since they're ultimately responsible for the pool and their property. So that's, that's our thoughts. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mike, and thanks for joining us. I know uh, ordinance was late in the agenda. Uh, so the ordinance review committee had prepared um, uh, ordinance amendment to this uh, previously. And um, it listed some of those safety um, requirements for either fence or for a uh, cover if we decided to um, allow a, on a cover or a fence. Um, and the committee is just looking for some direction if they'd like us, uh, if the board would like for us to revisit um, any aspect of that proposal or um, draft something else or um, you know, continue with a fence requirement.
Comments, questions from board members then?
I think when this was up last time, I shared, I'm, I would support it being option of the homeowner if it's fence or a cover. So I would support the uh, proposed language that the ordinance committee had put in a couple, when we reviewed this last time, I would support that.
All right, thanks Sarah.
I agree with Sarah.
Thanks Troy.
From my perspective, as a, as a, a parent of an autistic child who is known to wander, unfortunately, I can't support uh, changing this ordinance. Due to safety concerns.
Thank you, David. Other comments?
Um, if I can ask a question of Mike?
Sure.
So for the button to cover the pool back up, how long does it take for the pool to get covered?
About forty-five seconds. Obviously depends upon the, the length of the pool. Uh, but again, I, whenever we, you know, we have to put our pin in, my wife and I only have, and we have to hold the button the entire time. So we have to be, and we have to be essentially watching that nothing is getting into the pool while that's occurring. So, it's a great feature that again, we learned a lot through the process because we were, thought we were going to get a fence. And then as we learn more, we, for us, we realized that we're in control uh, in its entirety as opposed to a child. We have three children home. Um, we also like it because our children, we can control access from inside the home going out. Um, again, my wife and I have to open it. So it's not, it's where, a lot of folks have solar covers, um, which are really disastrous just because if something pet, child gets entangled in a solar cover, it's pretty bad news. So, this was the right option for us. And we like the fact that there is no gate uh, that could be left open for someone to wander into. So.
Um, sure, I appreciate that. One concern that I have is what if you go inside um, and leave the cover open, like in your other, like you can't, you aren't going to close every time you go inside, right? You're going to leave the cover open sometimes.
That, that's the idea is that we're out there monitoring. It's the same way as a, a fence gate can be left open. A child can walk through a fence gate, not have it latch, and then we're essentially in a similar scenario. Um, so I, I would say that again, it, it's our responsibility um, to be out there, either my wife or I, um, whether the pool's in use. And it, it's become common practice for us to, someone's out there. We have them all out there. And again, it's our responsibility to manage that risk.
Um, and so currently, you don't have a fence around your pool?
We do, we have a, we have a temporary fence. And so we were pretty late in the season whenever we got the pool in and were actually able to use it. So we have a temporary fence there. And so, um, we're just kind of waiting to see uh, if we could have the opportunity, which we're again grateful that Melissa, our perspective and that of the International Code Council.
Thank you.
Any, uh, any other, go ahead.
Sorry, John, I just had another thought. I guess I would be open to more information, but at this point, I'm not, I'm not at the point where I'd be okay with changing the ordinance. Um, if there was more um, information provided by staff and or legal regarding the, the cover as opposed to the fence and how many other municipalities have changed? Because last time, I don't remember the exact information, but it didn't seem like a lot of other municipalities had um, gone to covers.
I think I remember it being almost fifty fifty. Um, sorry, I have a dog joining me here. Um, around what municipalities had, were approving um, covers or fences was my me, my recollection of it. But we could pull that back up. But what other data would you want, Melissa? What?
Well, I guess that there's no information included in our packet right now. I don't feel comfortable making a decision one way or the other. And so I'd like, if there was enough information previously, it just didn't seem like it to me at that time because I did not vote in favor of changing the ordinance. So I would need more information to change my opinion just a few months later.
Happy to share the information.
For here.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Meaning that we just want to, the, I guess where I'm going with this is, they want us to look at this or possibly reexamine this and, and when more information is provided, if we decided to re, relook at the uh, fence requirement. We're not changing the fence requirement tonight. We're just looking to see if we want to review the, the ordinance.
Um, the committee can certainly gather more information, but it, it would be helpful if um, you know, the committee is kind of limited in its capabilities. Um, so yeah, if we got some additional um, staff assistance, um, you know, because the ordinance review committee isn't staffed. So it's um, oh, it's a hefty um, amount of work for ordinance to get it all together on their own. So um, if there's something specific, we could, you know, look up which communities have that or um, bring the ordinance back. Um, but we just needed some more guidance or if you wanted additional staff time dedicated to um, you know, relooking at the ordinance.
Sounds like we might have.
Troy, we can't hear you. I hear lips moving, Troy, but I don't hear you.
All right. Put, put myself on mute. I should take myself off mute. Um, I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll go along with that. So I, I'll make a motion that we gather more information. Uh, if staff time is needed, provide that to uh, see what other communities are doing. At, at the end of the day, uh, you know, big brother can't watch over everything. When I walked through the village and today and you see the number of above ground pools that have three steps to get into the pool and there's no fence around them at all. So that, that's a separate subject, but um, I think um, I think just be a good review and, and, and homeowners are homeowners. They need to be responsible. Uh, we need to be responsible with our kids and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing and not where they're not supposed to be. And so I think it's a win-win for all of our community.
All right, is there a second to reexamine?
I'll second. Agreed on Troy's comments.
Thank you, Troy. Um, any further discussion? Having heard none then, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Anything else, Heidi?
Um, so just um, the committee will work on um, pulling something together and work with staff on gathering more information. Um, and kind of on that line with the committee, I'm planning to reach out to committee members to kind of a self-assessment on um, how we're, how we can more effectively um, work through ordinances as there's a lot of steps and back and forth with legal and when there's no staff at the committee. Kind of what are our limits as a committee? How can we be effective? Is this centralized review the most effective? Or do we need to think about a more decentralized um, way to review ordinances where it can be kind of prioritized among departments? And so I'm, um, I'm kind of brainstorming that and plan to reach out to committee members on how we can kind of um, most effectively manage our ordinances and hopefully look to staff and uh, other board members and what they see on committees and how we can kind of best achieve um, ordinance review. So, um, just kind of a general comment about committee. Um, our next meeting, uh, I guess we'll, we'll plan one in January to kind of start to gather this pool stuff. Thank you.
Thanks Heidi. Um, move then down to Deer Grove EMS Commission. Let's see that Sarah or Troy.
Uh, we met last Thursday, the sixteenth, my mom's birthday. Um, update on the TAA, as I mentioned, uh, they wanted a special meeting for us to um, uh, uh, make overview of the um, the results of the study. That again, is going to be on uh, the eighteenth of January at six thirty. Um, update on art usage of ARPA funds. Um, unfortunately, uh, the town of Cottage Grove, the village of Cottage Grove, uh, and the village of Deerfield, the funds don't qualify for radios. So they've added that to the capital budget for twenty twenty-three. Uh, collective bargaining has been passed by all three communities. Uh, there was an approval of the um, building use and security um, policy. Um, capital fund replacement schedule was reviewed, included in the packet, uh, goes through uh, ten years, basically replacing an ambulance uh, e- every three. Um, and then uh, there's some discussions about LTE recruitment and retention strategies. Uh, one thing that was passed is raising the hourly rate from nineteen to twenty dollars an hour. Uh, the rest of that uh, material was tabled until we get some study results to build that in. And um, there was a approval of the proposal for electronic patient care reports to um, not exceed eight thousand dollars as budgeted. Our next meeting is on uh, January, regular meeting is on January twentieth with a special meeting on January eighteenth. Did I miss anything? Uh, Sarah? All right, I will mention too, uh, calls for the year. Uh, village of Cottage Grove, we were at four hundred and seven. Uh, last year, we're at four seventy-three this year. Um, our total calls are up uh, through the district, uh, up one seventy-six. And uh, we're definitely going to have surpassed uh, last year, uh, for a number of calls.
All right, thanks Troy. Um, moving then down to reports from village officers. Uh, Stafford, uh, Rick, anything?
Nothing to report.
All right. Jane took it all for you. Um, we already had Chief Archibald uh, speak and share his report. Great. Uh, move then to communication and Melissa's business. Consider vouchers. Any questions, comments about the vouchers?
Motion to approve the vouchers as listed.
Thanks Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Troy. Is there any further discussion? Having heard none then, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Uh, correspondence? I didn't, I didn't have any in particular. I don't know if anybody else did. All right, um, upcoming community events? Anybody aware of anything coming down the pike as we start to begin the hibernation process? The only thing I would say is everybody have uh, safe and happy holidays from, from uh, their family and friends, community events. Uh, future agenda items? Matt, anything or Aaron or Lisa that we got on our radar?
John, I do have something I'd like to discuss. It doesn't have to be urgent, but I definitely like to put it on the, the timeline on uh, how the DNR monitors uh, treated discharge, like what Hydrate's going to do and kind of um, how they test, what they were testing for. Um, and then perhaps staff input on um, monitoring stations like village run monitoring stations for um, stormwater ponds, um, just to independently protect our waterways. Um, or if there are any ordinance changes that we might need to look at, um, monitor water quality. And that may apply in other committees or um, come here, I guess.
Yeah, it might be a, a legal question too, Heidi, as well.
Yep, yep, staff or consultants.
Yeah. We can definitely jot that in, uh, fit that in somewhere. Any others? Otherwise, uh, probably usual suspects. Otherwise, probably usual suspects.
Are we going to put the construction traffic issue?
Yeah, I had that one.
I think Aaron's meeting with, with that resident, but I'm still not clear how that would be a discussion at, at the board, but we can certainly put it on there, I'm just not sure what we'll accomplish.
Yeah, doesn't matter, whatever you think, just wanted to make sure that was getting discussed somewhere.
Yeah, we can, we can report back how the meeting went, or something like that.
Okay.
All right, if there are no other future agenda items to cover right now, we'll move right to item eleven.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Please.
Thanks Troy, thanks David. Non-debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody, have, happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Merry Christmas.